Call the board and record in the minutes. A member of the president's ass. McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Here.
Kane?
Here.
Hanson?
Here.
We don't need any compliance statements.
I, the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alva Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certify that prior to December 15th of last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the county clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in a prominent public view at the location of the meeting. Witness my hand is seventh day of May 2018.
Number three, consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of a routine nature, normally approved at a board meeting, will be approved by one board vote unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items. Three dash one, addition of items of new business to the agenda?
Have none.
Three point two, minutes of the April 9th, 2018 regular board meeting.
Do you want to read all of those?
For the Treasury Report on the Status of Fund Investment, approval of the Activity Fund Report, approval of the Activity Account Fundraisers, approval to declare items as surplus property, approval of activity fund inter-account transfers, approval of the Child Nutrition Report, and approval of function changes.
Did anybody see anything with minutes? Any problems or anything there? Okay, how you doing? Okay, we'll go to Treasury Report. And you can see the April. And total monies at this point in time still have 10 big, 10222619. And then total down there, 12, 515, 324. Our comparison, again, is that, you know, we've incurred 883,000 more than we did last year, and we've actually spent, more compared to 509. Uh, we're lacking 773,000 yet to take in from our general fund. We still got two, three months left. Gross production was up 248, 730. Last month, I believe, we were right at 223, so that's still hanging in there and going up and so forth. So, again, we're in good shape at this point in time. I know that Tiffany and Jane and Tim had a meeting with State Guru on finance and learned quite a bit during that day. Do y'all want to comment or anything on that meeting?
Oh, it's very good. And Tim continued for some of the classes as well. And as any of your interests, thank you all. Will there be more of it? Do you think you have anything there?
I think it'll help us get a better picture of our financials, more meaningful, a way to present the information more meaningful.
You went on the form, now let's see what I'm talking about, carryover. It's very, very good.
I think we'll have pretty active carryover value at the next board meeting to let you go. And then that last sheet that Terry always makes for y'all, the projections and so forth, you can see where we've collected the money and so forth. We still got, you know, locational salary, those to come in and so forth. And the county appropriations up there, well, we've only got 21%. We had a big, somebody owed a lot of money last year, and that's why that's so different because usually it's around 48,000, 45,000 or so if you go over that 216 column. So that's why that shows 21% on that. But shows everything's good financially for the school district and so forth. Any questions? Activity fund, good save activity fund wise? I think the winner's long gone. After that $18,000.
Giving a lot of that, too.
Workout's not bad. Okay. Activity fundraisers for this month. Cheerleaders wanting to sell clothing items, both middle school and high school, and this is something that they've done the last two years, I believe. Surplus items. We had some old computers that we declared surplus and donated them to Northwest Family Services because they needed some. Those are the serial numbers and so forth there. And then it looks like Washington took care of all of their old phones and an old fax machine, and that they've declared, and they're down at Buzz Park. So if you need to buy any more phones, we could sell them to you then.
That one might not work.
And then the inter-account transfer. We had middle school track and $1,500 because our high school track worked in middle school basketball concession gate, so gives them money there. Child nutrition. Again, we're serving a lot of lunches. We served over 400 more lunches this month than we did a year ago, and we had three less days, but our breakfast was there. So I'm not sure why on that, but still serving a lot of breakfasts and lunches compared to what we've done in the past. Function changes. And again, anytime we have a function change, we're not changing the total budget whatsoever. Uh, we've had to add some money in to the psychological services because of testing. Also, more physical therapy done with our special needs, building surface, and then C and E, professional development, that's for some cooks going to summer program this summer. And then land improvement, it's actually out of the baseball, Terry coded it there, and then we had to code in that 4620, the modular building. And then we have insurance additions and balances and so forth. And you can see that the adult meals and so forth, we had to increase on that, and overall 50,000 for the remainder of the year to buy groceries and so forth. But again, no new monies, no less monies, it's just changing from one function to another to balance it out, and Terry does that. Okay?
What does it mean up there? Was it decreased to 144?
We decreased Fund 11, Function 1,000. And 1,000 is general fund, and it's usually just education, so a lot of money's just dumped into that, and then we'll go and put it into the different functions. Okay? So like 2140, that psychological service, that's our testing for special need students' possibility of autism and those types of things. We contract with Vision, and they do that for us. Okay?
What's the 78 on that one right there?
That's the extra building that we're going to put at Washington this summer for the, so that we can get every pre-K over at Washington and get all of the ribs that we need, that number students that we've got over there. Great questions. Anything else?
I believe that we approved the consent agenda. Those items referenced in 3.2 through 3.9.
I'll second that. Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
The four vote to approve purchase order conferences for the following funds for fiscal year 2018. 4.1, general fund as referenced. 4.2, building fund as referenced. 4.3, child nutrition fund as referenced. 4.4, GISH fund as referenced.
Okay, if we'll look at the general fund. Mass Inc., SI conversion installation, that's the new student information system that we are going to next year. RSTI program was bought out by Power School, and Mass Inc. has about 85% of the schools in the state of Oklahoma. And every time that we have problems with our student information, we were the last ones on the books because we weren't connected to WAVE as much as Mass. So Mass has got 85%, so that WAVE is very important for all of our statistical reports and so forth. So rather than WAVE here, we decided to go ahead and go with conversion next year so that we're going to be on that 85% of all schools with Mass Inc. It also coordinates with our accounting and so forth, so working with one company there.
Is that a one-time deal or just the installation?
That's just the conversion and installation. We have to pay a whole annual fee, I'm going to say somewhere around $5,000 if I can remember correctly. It's a little higher than what we're paying right now, but they're going to provide, you know, webinars and in-service, professional development and so forth. But I don't think we had a choice because we were either going to have to go with Power School, which is new to us, or go to that, so we decided we better go this year with that. And then Jenkins surprise, we, you know, 739, custodial supplies. 740, the new diesel activity bus. We had electrical harness that went bad, and so we had to replace that. So that's the cost of that, plus it'll be a little bit more on some labor and so forth. And I don't understand it, I'm not a mechanic, but apparently it's a whole bunch of wires and so forth, and you got to get them wired up at the right place at the right time. We also had to have some work on it due to that electrical problem down here. Oh, let me see. Central power systems in service, purchase order 769. Because of that electrical problem, it screwed up all of our fuel injectors. So they had to take those to Woodward to get fuel injectors on that bus. Okay?
Is this Lee's bus?
No, this is our activity bus. This is the Van Gool that we own, yes. Okay, and then just some open purchase orders for the city valve, 742. Northwest Electric, 743, open purchase orders for electrical work. Then 749, OSBA conference registration in August. And then 756, middle school football jerseys. And then 757, middle school football helmets. And then 762, those are repairs that we will take our brand instruments over to Midwest and get those repaired. We try to do that each and every year. And then again, that 769 is to pay for those fuel injectors in that activity bus. Any questions there? Okay. Building fund. Simpsons, we had some plumbing problems out to Adfund, and Brandy Conference Solutions at Lincoln, they had worked on some air conditioners up there. Child nutrition. We had to buy a freezer for Alva High School. We bought that locally here besides its sounds. Gifted money. We got some money from Shertrout with some lights in the auto car and so forth, so this is part of that, and we still have a little bit to go on that, so. Mr. Brock and Mr. Martin work together, and I think we're going to add some more LED lights so that we can get some better pictures and so we don't have those shadows and darkness on that stage, so we still have some money left that we can spend out of that gift also. So we ought to go today. Any questions?
I make a motion to vote to approve purchase order conferences for 4.1 through 4.4. Second? Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Five yours, Jane.
Five's nine. Finished up. Okay, we have two very special people to honor. We might even be known as the school of the year this year.
Well, I think we are every year.
On behalf of the board of administration, we'd like to say congratulations to our superintendent of the year for our district. There are 20 districts in Oklahoma, and Mr. Parker's just one for district number two. And I'm happy to note that he will attend, it looks like, the COSA meeting. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Good. So he'll be awarded that and the woman at the COSA meeting, and even though he'll be the superintendent of the year for us, he is not going to go for the full running, but...
That's for the active superintendent.
Yeah. So, um, to not be left behind, we also got the assistant superintendent.
Wow.
Proud of both of you. Appreciate your service and your dedication to our school system. And you two will be awarded yours in November, or in Norman. I hope that be a good place for you to visit. And again, thank you so much, and you'll get your awards there.
Can you do a picture of you hanging on a piece of paper?
Sure. We can do whatever you want, it's your charge. Or we can do it when we get finished.
Whichever you prefer.
Let's do it when we finish. Aren't you going to take some of the girls?
Yes.
We got an awards banquet.
I don't have anything, they really give them. Look how fast we shot. We're going to slam the grand here.
Yeah, nice smiles, there's one, let's do one more. Thank you.
Congratulations.
I would get old enough and you're tired.
I guess so, or they probably give you something. I'm probably hundreds of million dollars. He told me earlier, 10 pounds he is, but he just felt sorry for him.
That's right, geez.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Okay, superintendent's report, we've got some resignations. Mr. Dollar's going to resign from golf coach. Mr. Smith, he is officially resigning as math teacher. Ken MacIntosh is resigning as local, going to Carl Albert to take another job. And LaDonna Durkey's resigned from being the concession chairman, so those are some things that we're going to have to look at. Communications, Tracy Gingrich, elementary council, is going to be reassigned up to the Lincoln, so she will have third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade. And that's due to Sherry Slater's retirement, so we're going to be looking for pre-K, first grade, kindergarten, second, elementary council for the future. But she's been resigned now. The only other communications I really had is really not good news. With this COVID petition, it has until July the 18th to get all the required voter signatures and so forth. If they get that, then they'll have to call for an election. And teacher pay raise could be placed on hold at that time because all the taxes will be on hold at that point in time. So teacher pay raise contains a section that makes a contingent on the enactment of House Bill 1010XX. So if there's no taxes taken up this summer, we don't know for sure what's going to happen with salary schedule and the pay raises and so forth. From what I understand, they've only got to get about 42,000 signatures, and then it becomes the vote of the people, and whether the vote, and then the people will vote yes or no on that. So things could be up in the air for a long time yet. Are you all getting any more news from OSSBA different than I am?
No, I'm not. That's what I'm getting.
And that's all the communications. Do y'all have any questions for me? Okay?
7.1, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an offer of employment on a one-year temporary contract to applicant number one, certified teacher; applicant number two, certified teacher; applicant number three, certified teacher; applicant number four, certified teacher, and they all have names.
I'm going to let pre-K, so Mr. Peady, so I wanted you to do your candidate.
Ruth Petchy has been with us as a substitute for the past year. She's done a great job. She's been all over the district in all capacities, had a great interview, and we're very excited about her coming to Washington to do pre-K.
And then Allison is going to recommend Teresa Lloyd, who we had hired last year to end up with pre-K. So she's coming back to fill in that second. So, special ed.
Um, I would like to introduce Morgan Woodruff, and she is joining us as a special ed teacher. She's coming to us from Kiawah, and she's getting married to an Alva native, Louis.
Nice longer.
And we're really excited to have her in Lincoln next year.
And then Stephanie.
Yes, Chesney Thomas, sitting over there. And she worked at the high school this year, she's worked down at the middle school, and she completed all of her testing requirements, and she is now certified to be a special ed teacher, so we're super excited about having her in that position.
There will be another, again, item later. Okay, go ahead. Middle school science.
Oh my God, you do it again.
Okay, we have Ms. Brenna Heaton. She taught up at, or did adjunct up at Northwestern, and she's going to come down and be an eighth grade science teacher for us.
Very excited about having these people join the staff, looking forward to great things. I hear good things about you all, so congratulations.
Discussion with possible?
We need a motion.
Oh, okay. Looking around like we're laughing something. What about a motion?
I make the motion that we hire for pre-K Ruth Petchy, second grade, Teresa Lloyd, special education Morgan Woodruff, and middle school eighth grade science Brenna Heaton.
Second? Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Yes.
Welcome. Seven two, discussion with possible board action vote to approve an offer of employment to applicant number one, certified teacher, for the 2018-19 school year.
Chesney has been with us for two years. At two different positions. And last year, she was team teaching in special ed, and we were able to use her at that point in time, so she studied all year long to take that test, so she is qualified for special ed, and that's where her position will be next year.
Certified in everything.
Be careful. Bet she's good in band, too.
We're going to find out.
You said it. Okay. Thank you for the motion. Do you hear a motion?
I make a motion, we accept her.
I second that. McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, 7.3, discussion with possible board action vote to rehire the following non-certified personnel for fiscal year 19. See the attachment B.
These are non-certified that have worked for us, and they have been evaluated, and individual principals are recommended that they be rehired for the 2018-2019 school year.
So move.
Second? Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
7.4, discussion with possible board action to enter into extra duty contracts for Alva High School cheer coach position and Alva High School softball coach position for the school year 2018-19.
Now I'll let Mr. Potter.
I am excited to introduce to you Brandy Brown.
Hi.
Megan Stratton. And Brandy will do cheerleading, and Megan will do softball, and they each have a wealth of experience in their respective fields, and we are happy to have them come and work with our young ladies and young men to further what they do. And so they're going to be lay coaches, and so we'll gather them in and school them up as best we can, keep them informed. Communication with lay coaches is always a hard thing that we have to work through, so we will get that, get that lined out as they come onboard and figure that out. Really excited that they're here because they're very, very knowledgeable in what they do.
Welcome, glad to have you.
Thanks.
Motion?
I make a motion, we accept her.
Thank you for motion. Second? Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Well, congratulations to all of you. Whatever you want to do.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got to leave.
No, I'm just kidding, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you.
Have fun. 7.5, discussion with possible board action vote to approve the following contracts for fiscal year 19. 7.5, point one, school work. We do these together or all separately?
You can.
Do you mind, board, listing them all together?
That's fine.
7.5, point two, Clearwater Enterprises, and 7.5, point three, ADT.
7.51, school of work is our contract with READ, where we have students get paid for work and so forth, and they have to qualify for that. Clearwater Enterprises is our broker for gas for the high school, middle school, and also for the indoor facility. We're going to save somewhere around $5,000 on our gas bill. We've been with Clearwater at the high school and the middle school for a long time now, and they just, basically, they brokered that out. So we use enough gas in the indoor facility that we got that on there. So that's an annual contract that we usually do. And the ADT, that is our drug testing company for our bus drivers, and I would recommend to the board that we approve those contracts for FY 19.
I move to approve the contracts referenced in 7.51, 7.52, and 7.53.
I second that motion.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
7.6, discussion with possible board action vote to approve request from the Bible Baptist Church to use a bus during June 4 through 8, 2018. from the Bible Baptist Church to use a bus during June 4 through 8, 2018, traveling to Black Mason State Park at Kenton, Oklahoma.
Bible Baptist, like it says in the letter, has been using our bus for the past eight years. They need all the qualifications, insurance, and mileage and so forth. Have not had any problems. So I would recommend to the Board that we enter into this agreement with Bible Baptist.
I make a motion that we approve Bible Baptist using our buses, our best.
Second.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
7.7, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve the following Alva Public Schools athletic camps for the summer of 2018.
Last year was the first time that the Board gave up approval to do this. And so it worked out so well, we want to do it again. It only costs an individual $10. The family can't pay more than $50 for it. And it's all runs with our coaches and our coaches are being paid for and so forth. But the most a family can pay is $50. And we had several kids in the camps last year when you talk about summer pride, basketball, baseball, softball, and so forth. And it worked out great for our kids and the community. So I'd recommend that Board approve this.
Do the coaches get paid depending on how many people come to the camp? Or is it a set fee?
No, it's a set fee because of number of hours that we worked out last year, how many hours they worked in camp. Also takes care of some travel time and summer league basketball and so forth. I think they came out more than what they could with trying to charge a camp and paying expenses and so forth. So, you know, we pay on the extra duty schedule and so forth. So it all worked out well and the district's paying for it now. So we're cutting down the cost to the families by doing it this way.
It says the grades are 2 through 8. Is that their current grades or is that what they will be in the next year?
Next year.
Next year.
Is that the way it's always been pushed for, except for?
Yeah, I think so.
Well, Jane, I think we tried to do some kindergarten one year and I think we found out that that was
Pretty little.
Yeah, and concentration and so forth. So I think they did raise it last year to certainly send if you get any below that.
It might be babysitting at 18. No, you're right. I
That's so true. Sorry.
Well, truth hurts sometimes. No, I thought that was a little older than normal for some reason, but so it's going to be. Your motion?
Motion that we approve.
7.7.
7.7.
There you go.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
7.8, you have been distributed the following board policies to view. You'll vote on them next time.
Either that or July.
Or July.
Some of it's just new language, some of it's new. Some of it, you're going to make a choice of how you want it worded and so forth. So you can review it and come back in the G-Board meeting if you want to decide on how you want it written as a board policy. And then you can vote on it in July, then it goes into a pattern. And we get these from the Oklahoma School Board because we belong to that organization and we pay a little extra for them to upgrade all of our policies and so forth. So these are policies recommended by the Oklahoma School Board Association.
And are they proposed as is, Mr. Parker, with no changes?
You can change some, Jane, okay? You have some options.
Is it your recommendation as is?
I think you need to look at it and see if that's what you all as policymakers want, okay?
Should we have a meeting of some sort with the Board? Or I would say that if we need to view them at that?
I would think so, yes.
Then we'll schedule one.
Okay.
We'll meet and then we'll propose our proposed changes and then come back and vote. Okay? 7.8, if you really love policy, let me know.
Sounds like a dissertation.
That's right. People are really good at what they talk about. Okay. Let's do 7.9, discussion with possible board action, vote to approve summer school classes and instructors. 791, summer drivers, summer drivers' education first session. 791.1 Steve Gale. We're going to do these all at once.
I think you can.
7.9.2 Washington Summer Learning Academy, June 4 through 28, with 79 Tiffany Motta, 792.2 Whitney Cotton, 792.3 Tabitha Carruthers, and 792.4 Pam Kaufman. 7.93 Longfellow Summer Reading Programs, June 4 through 28. 79.3.1 Melissa Mahary. 79.3.2 Marisha Hendrick. 79.3.3 Audrey Olive. 79.3.4 Emily Kennedy.
These are the programs that we've been running the last several years. Driver's Ed's been there for a long time. Washington Summer Learning Academy, when did you start that?
This would be the
Third, fourth year.
Third year, maybe fourth year. Was it my first year or my second year?
Maybe it was. And then the Reading Sufficiency Act at Longfellow, okay? Nobody's required to go. It's an option. Teachers will call and request and so forth, let parents know what's going on and why they need to be there and so forth. But nobody's made to do it.
Just in the mornings?
Just in the mornings.
Have we had good attendance in the past?
We've had really good attendance. Reading sufficiency, we probably have, what, 15 to 20 each summer? And how many do you have in your?
I currently have 24 with a handful that are on the fence and I have to have some spots in case some of them don't pass that reading section. So I have four names up there. I need definitely three. The fourth one will depend on what that number happens and she knows as well that she may or may not, I may or may not need her.
What are the hours of this?
8:45 to 11:45, Monday through Thursday for the month of June. Four weeks.
And so they may be, one may not be a full-time teacher right now.
Marisha Hendrick is if we need her. Right now, I need the three. And it'll be depended upon what, I have a few maybes, a handful of maybes still out there. And then wanting to have some spots in case when someone slipped through the cracks and is not already in there.
Gotcha. Okay. And then one's an A to B. Okay.
And the one A is needed because of the IEP.
Gotcha.
Okay? Continuing summer months. Where are you going?
Extended school year.
Extended school year.
I'd make the motion to approve the summer school classes with the instructors in 7.91, 7.92, and 7.93, encompassing those employees.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes. Kane?
Yes.
7.2, discussion with possible board action vote to approve a $175 fee to be charged for the summer driver's education.
We do get some money back from the state, but this pretty well takes care of our expenses and so forth on Steve's salary. So we haven't changed this for about three years now. It used to cost about $150 about four years ago. It's $175 now. So I'd recommend to the Board that we keep it at $175.
I make the motion we approve the $175 fee for summer driver's education program.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Number eight, proposed executive session to discuss employee staffing for fiscal year 19 per 25 Oklahoma State Statutes 307B1. Vote to convene into executive session. I take that motion we go into executive session.
Second.
McDermott?
Aye.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.